Is Randy having a victory board?
At this time, I'll call the monthly meetings to order. And I ask that you silence your cell phones at this time. Commissioner Langley will lead us in the invocation. And Commissioner Evans will do the pledge of allegiance. So I ask you to stand.
Let's pray.
Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful that you have allowed us to assemble here. One more time, we thank you and we bless your name, God, for continued life, health, and strength, and touch our hearts and minds concerning the business of your people, that we will make wise and prudent decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
At this time, I'll entertain anyone that would wish to disclose a conflict. If not, we'll move to item number D, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like a closed session on personnel.
Okay. All right. Any other changes?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of the agenda, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. We're down to our public hearing tonight on economic development. And need a motion to go into the public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to you, Martin.
Thank you. This public hearing is to receive comments on a proposed economic development project grant to Project New under North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1. Project New is a venture for an existing seafood wholesale business to sustain their current business into the future. Other grants that are going to be possibly received by the company are Community Development Grant through the North Carolina Department of Commerce, some funding through Tideland EMC, possibly from DOT and the Golden Leaf Foundation. The renovation is an existing structure owned by the company of $1,260 on the tax books. They propose to invest $1.5 million in the building to bring it up to standard for their process, and then another $250,000 to invest in equipment. They anticipate at full production to employ 25 full-time employees and 30 seasonal employees. The grant would be for five years, approximately $52,000.
Any comments or questions from the commissioners? We didn't have anybody sign up for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of? If not, I'll entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing. Got a motion, second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're down to the public comments section. And our first one is Ms. Bryan. This was a call-in. Is she here? Bobby, is there anyone outside? Okay. All right. The second one is Mr. Harris. Jerry, will you help him with that?
Mic down.
I think.
I'm here to speak. Some of y'all might not like what I'm gonna say, but it don't matter to me, but you do it on. Now, when this flood came, only reason I got out of my house because of my wife. And the water came up on the porch, but it didn't go in the house. But when it came there, I'm handicapped. I've been handicapped since 1996. And when they came to rescue me, I had to get out of my chair. Because if I get out of my chair, I can't walk from here to there without falling. I had to get out of my chair, crawl down a boat, by myself. Whole rescue me behind me. Get out of that boat, climb up a ladder, into the truck by myself, and rescue didn't help me. Then, when I got out of there, the cab bus, me and my wife, to another place. I had to crawl right back out by myself. That's like the other week when Mr. Hood say, rescue need to do something about rescue. They need to do something about rescue, because they don't know how to rescue nobody. In this stuff, I had to climb back out. The people that was in the truck along with us, everybody got waited on when they got to Washington High School. But us, I'm sitting there soaking wet, my wife soaking wet, all my clothes soaking wet. Then, about two hours later, the woman from the red car come up and say, do you want to help me? I said, no, ain't no need to help me now, I'm already wet. So let me stay wet. Then, one woman said, because I was talking to one person on the red car that was head of her, told me, say, you better shut up. I said, why? She said, you threatening her. I said, ain't threatening nobody. Then, I'm sitting right there about five minutes. Here come all the church department and everybody surrounding me, they're like I'm some kind of criminal or something. I told the one, I said, ain't scared no law. Because I can speak my rights. That's a right for me. Woman come talk about, you keep hanging your hand up here, I'm gonna hit your hand. I said, you go ahead and hit it if you want to, I own everything you got. I said, I'm disabled. You can't stop me from speaking my rights. And she left me alone for about five minutes. Then, after everybody else got waited on, the first thing to happen when we got to Washington High School, the woman asked for, I and me and my wife, card from the social service, Medicaid card. And I went, this is a rescue? Rescue, you don't pay for no rescue. And I talked to somebody else about it, that worked with another company that do work during the rescue. Said, all the rides are free that day, because you just part of the rescue. And you know where I ended up at? Way in Goldsboro. I ain't crazy. Then, social worker told us, if you get there, we're going on the Medicaid, Medicaid card. You get there, we promise we'll get you way back. They didn't get us way back. Now, I've been to Washington all my life. When we kept asking, could we go home? She said, no, you can't go home from Washington to water. I said, you want water, ain't nothing to water. So, down from us, and behind us, people going home to Plymouth. You got to pass right by my house before you get to Plymouth, before you even get to the hospital, when the road closed. We had to pay going there, and had to pay my buddy money coming back from there. But my $500-something dollar bill is sitting home after they get it. They get it. But I wasn't technically gonna get it for me, because I ain't gonna pay them. And I had to give my buddy $60 to bring us home. We came all the way through Washington, want no water in nowhere. And you know, the first thing I saw was one of them gray and red ambulance over to ducks getting filled up. Then we rolled around a little bit more. There another red and orange ambulance that was already come from, come from Green, Goldsboro. It was sitting over there at the ducks by the mall, getting filled up. But what they going to Plymouth for, saying the road's already closed, and they can't do nothing to me? See, you need to work on rescue squad, but they can rescue somebody that's handicapped. Suppose I had fell, with nobody helping, standing around there looking at me, suppose I had fell? Y'all been bad shape because of your rescue squad. But next time when something like that happened, me and my wife were made our minds up. If that happened, well, let's commit to it, let's commit to it. I ain't, I don't want nobody to come up there, something, they gonna rescue me no more. See, I've been getting the beat around from everybody since I came disabled. It's a woman in here that helped me. I ain't gonna mention no name. It's a man in here that helped me. When they left, when she left and went somewhere else, nobody helped nobody. This stuff they holler about, the red cross, that's a no-no. When I was working down on the beach, and every place I worked there, they talk about, you get money to the red cross, they help you in die knee. And I need die knee, I need finer blood. Oh, they say, you ain't got to pay for that, you ain't got to pay for that. But when I got my sickness back from the hospital, I paid for it. They tell you they gonna help you, they ain't gonna help you. I had the wind come through my house, blow my air conditioner out the window, messed up freezer, messed up some of everything. Couldn't help me. But, I ain't gonna mention no name, I know by fact, they helped another person with stuff. Because my eyes were running probably, they couldn't help me. But this person they helped with fight. And what did it? You may flag a legion to the flag. One for another. You go by the constitution, you ain't keeping that up. Going to get it stiff. You go, you have a whole lot of stuff in Washington. This stuff they holler about light bill. This one person left light bill play, you go there, if you get the social service to help you, you give them the bill, for you came from the social service, where they talking about they gonna pay the bill. But, you got to pay that bill before they would do anything. My light bill came last day, you know what it was? $500-something dollars. Think I knew, I, but, I ain't asking for no help. I tried to do it the best way I can. The Lord has been taking care of me for 68 years. I'm still standing here. All my buddies around me didn't go, but I'm still here. Lord, they through it, they yeah.
Mr. Harris, during the public comment, it's supposed to limit you to three minutes. I've already given you nine. Can you summarize?
If you don't, you don't want to finish hearing me, you ain't got to finish hearing me. See, because that's what happened every time when I try to say something. I'm black. If somebody up here white stands up, you wouldn't say a thing in the world. That's like the other week when I was here. You let a woman sit up here and speak, that's the longest you want to speak. You didn't say a thing in the world. I'm through, I'm through, I'm through, I'm through. Fight for things.
Thank you very much. The next person on here is Mr. McCaba?
McCab.
McCab.
There was a vote last October 1st at a board meeting here on a planning board vacancy. And I don't quibble with the results of the vote. I've won votes and I've lost votes. What I have exception, what I take exception to is the manner in which the vote was arrived at. And I'll continue. I wish these comments weren't necessary, but they are. In July, I learned of a three-year vacancy on the county planning board. The vacancy was in the Bath District. Being a resident of Bath, I decided to apply for the position. I filled out the application and mailed it. Mysteriously, that application disappeared. So I filled out another application, mailed it, and it was received on September 7th. In the interim between September 7th and the board meeting on October 1st, I decided to speak to the board about my qualifications for the position. I appeared for the board meeting, grabbed an agenda, and signed up to speak. Being an observant person, I noticed that one of the board members recognized me. He knows me because I took him to task for an election year postcard sent to my home, denigrating Donald Dixon and implying Mr. Dixon was Wood Richardson's lapdog. After spotting me on the, after spotting me, the board member walked to the signup podium and noted my name. No sooner had the meeting begun than Mr. Bryn moved the planning board vote to ahead of public comments, when previously, the vote had been planned well after public comments. Pretty slick move, Mr. Bryn. And in keeping with your character.
I don't know what you're talking about.
It seems that, of course you don't.
I sure don't.
It seems that the Gang of Six had recruited someone else at the last minute to fill the position, therefore depriving me of my opportunity to speak on my behalf. So tonight, I thought I would do what I intended to do on October 1st. And I'm not going to bore the people out here, because I still have some humility. I left with the commissioners a list of all the voluntary activities I've done over the years since 1951 up to last year, 2017. So I guess you could say I worked successfully with thousands of people of all ages, colors, classes, genders, nationalities, and races. My education and experience has taught me to question, be creative, think freely and independently, and how to work with people. This board abhors these qualities, because diversity of thought is anathema. Group think is the order of the day. For those of you who call yourself Republicans, you have repeatedly violated the two prime precepts of Republicanism: smaller government and lower taxes. But get this, I'm no one's lapdog or whipping boy. I'm not guilty by association with anyone. Rather, I question the character, honor, integrity of this board. You know, most people think my name is French. Wrong, you messed with the wrong Sicilian.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
My name is Johnny Anderson. I'm here to speak on behalf of my nephew Cory Anderson, who is no longer here. He can't speak for himself. You guys, I'm sure, know me by now. Has been a comment made that this is all about politics. If it was all about politics, I wouldn't be here tonight, because the election's tomorrow. I know nothing I say tonight will have anything to do with the election tomorrow. That's not my point. What I'm saying tonight is about a person, a 35-year-old young man, who was my nephew. You, the commissioners, have asked the sheriff to bring his policy on notification when an inmate is hospitalized in serious condition. You've asked the sheriff to do that. We Cory's family have been asking for 18 months. We need to know why Cory's emergency contacts were not called. What will, what will the policy reveal? Will it lead to more questions? Will it keep the same thing from happening to another family and their loved one? Will this policy that we were told existed in February finally give us the answers that we're looking for? We've made many calls, we've had meetings, we've collected a lot of information. We have found nothing in the law that prohibits emergency contacts to be called. Think about it. The jail lists emergency contacts for inmates, and then they can't be called? How does that make any sense? If there's an emergency, certainly, they would be the ones to be called. Any other kind of thinking defies common sense and reasoning. North Carolina standards, in fact, for jail policy on inmates being hospitalized, say that contacts may, will, and can be notified. Again, what will the sheriff's policy say? One other option which the sheriff could have done was to release Cory from his custody, with Cory being classified by law as a low risk. He was not a high risk. Cory could have been released by the sheriff making a phone call to a judge. Cory would have then been able to seek his own medical care, would have been free to call his family, and the medical costs would have been his. It wouldn't have been that of the Beaufort County taxpayers. Why wasn't this done? Cory was no threat. Cory could have been released, and this could have happened instead of what did happen. If this been, if this had been your loved one, or if this had been you, and your, your family hadn't been notified, and you had have laid up there in the hospital, under the custody of, of the sheriff, and never seen your loved one, never been able to look them in the eye, them never have been able to look you in the eye, maybe tell you that you love you, maybe give you a hug, whatever it would have been, that would have been done? If that had have been you or your loved one, would that have been okay with you? I ask you that tonight. If it would, please raise your hand and tell me that that would have been okay? I didn't think so. I don't think it would be okay with any of you guys. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. God bless you, and God bless the United States of America. How about that?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Moore?
Tonight, I wanted to say to the commissioners who are ending your term of office, that I, as one citizen, appreciate what you've done to, for this community all the years you've served on here. You're not always right, you're not always wrong. But from listening to some of the people tonight, it sounds like you're always wrong. But I disagree. I think you do the best you can for the people of the community. And I would like to commend you for that. And thank Ron Buzzio for his service. Too bad that you decided not to run again. Also, to Jerry, I wish you a lot of luck on the positions you're trying to seek. And Ed, hope you're elected again, you're a pretty good guy. We see opposites in a lot of things, but a lot of things we see the same.
We do.
We do. But again, and for Gary, I know you're not running again, at this time anyway, but glad to see that you're up and almost running again, and look great. Thank you. Thank you all for, for what you've done for Beaufort County.
Thank you. Ms. Beasley?
I'm Christina Beasley. I would first like to report that last Thursday, November 1st, the North Carolina Utilities Commission denied the application for the amended certificate of public convenience and necessity for the addition of land to the solar facility in Terracee. The commission made this decision based on the concerns with maintenance of the ditches and the contamination of local water sources from the solar panels. I would like to thank the county commissioners, who have also, who also understand the severity of problems that solar panels will have on the region, and if not, if not properly placed and regulated. It is vital to make wise and intelligent decisions about anything that could result in negative long-term impacts. Myself, my family, and my friends take great offense to remarks that our objection to the Wilkerson Solar Project is based on greed or envy. Not a single person who has stood with our group will gain by one single cent. We are not letting this come between our family. We still break bread together despite our differences. Elections are tomorrow, and I pray the voters will go to the polls and vote for those who have stood by the citizens of Beaufort County in this David and Goliath story. Thank you to those who have stood by us, and all the citizens of Beaufort County have worked hard to understand the facts and position yourself to make educated decisions. It has truly shown. Thank you to the Solar Ordinance Committee, and also to Mr. Evans, even though you weren't on the committee, for attending so you could be educated, and for taking the time to work diligently on the solar ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Stand for items for consent.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. Items number H, items for discussion. The first one is the federal election subpoena update. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I think we should have an update on this. Voting, honest voting in elections, and people who, who are citizens voting in elections, and people not defrauding the election process by voting two or three times, is important to the success of our democracy. So, the purpose in this was to ask Attorney Francisco if he would bring us up to date on what is happening with this.
Yes, sir. As we know, on August 31st, the United States Attorney for the Eastern District of North Carolina subpoenaed the 44 counties located in this district, and requested the following documents from each one of them. Any and all poll books, e-poll books, voting records, and/or voter authorization documents, and executed official ballots, including absentee official ballots that were submitted to, filed by, received by, and/or maintained by those particular county boards in the 44 counties, from August 30th, 2013, through August 30th, 2018. We've had numerous calls between the county attorneys We've had numerous calls between the county attorneys and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners during the months of September and October, and we have discussed this particular issue. During a recent call, it was explained that the North Carolina Attorney General's Office confirmed the subpoena deadline had been extended to January. It originally was, I'm trying to remember, October 1st to November. Anyway, been extended to, in January. We, the Association of County Commissioners, anticipate that more updates from the Attorney General's Office on this issue will be involved, and will be in touch concerning those things later. In the meantime, the subpoenaed counties, all 44 of them, are encouraged to begin compiling the information on the burden of production. There has been developed a survey by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, which is outlined on an email that we received October the 29th. And the questions that need to be answered to get ready for whatever's going to happen in January are such things as, "How many total responsive documents do you estimate are in the county's possession? Please describe the logistical impediments your county may have in order to comply." That is, access to scanning equipment, staff time limitations, space to undertake reproduction of the documents, the budget constraints, et cetera. "How much do you estimate it would cost to comply with the request?" Please specify estimates for any of the areas below in which you have information. Employee time to undertake reproduction, employee time to undertake redaction, that is to line through things that we would be prohibited from revealing, acquisition of necessary equipment, and other expenses, please list. And then it says, "Please describe any other areas you have identified that speak to the level of the burden of the request." What is going on there is, what is going on here, is to determine what's it going to cost for us to comply with these subpoenas. That's not to say we're not going to comply, but we are going to explain to the powers that be, if you will, what it's going to cost to comply, and to see if something can be done in that regard. Not lost on us that the fact that tomorrow is voting day, and immediately following that, our local elections boards are extremely busy and unable to move much of this information around, but they've been asked, as time permits, they should be getting it together. Because we will ultimately, unless this situation changes, have to respond to these subpoenas. In addition, we have asked the state to assist in the expense to the 44 counties that have been asked to comply with this. So, there has been, there's been no action filed. There's only been the subpoenas, which started with the federal grand jury. So, this is where it is right now. We're doing the best we can to comply, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. I think it's important for the public to know that this board has not voted on anything to do with these subpoenas. There's been a massive effort that's gone forward, led by Wake County, for all of these counties to join together to try to find a way to slow down or defeat the subpoena. That will not serve us very well when it comes to illegal voting. And so, we're going to bring this thing back, probably at the next meeting, and ask this board to take a position. Do you support the subpoena and what it's trying to accomplish? Or are you against the subpoena? The effort so far is to slow down and stop the subpoena. I understand that subpoena can be renegotiated and a new subpoena issued, but we don't have a position on it right now. And I don't want us to wind up in a position where we are supporting the, doing away of the investigation that has to do with illegal voting, and people voting two or three times, and all these other things that go on about voting. This is an opportunity to clean it up. Okay, that takes care of me on that one.
Okay. Item number two is the FEMA MAPS update. I think, Brian, you've got information in our book.
I did. It was a request from Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, well, I'd just like your report on what's going on with this.
You have a copy of an email in your agenda. I'd be glad to read that, so the public will have their information as well. I reached out a couple of weeks ago to Mr. Randy Munn, who is the Outreach Coordinator for Department of Public Safety, just management section, handles the FEMA flood maps, or the firm maps. He had provided me an update on October the 1st, which I provided to you, and I was following back up with him to determine where we stood on that, and was that timeline still approximately the same? He replied back to me, and what I'll do is, I'll read for you my question and what his response was. So, based on the report that he gave me on 10-1, my question to him was, or my statement, I guess, just to follow it, to make sure, was the DPS was about three weeks behind due to the hurricane. His response was, "Perhaps add an additional two weeks due to Hurricane Michael." My second statement in question to him was preliminary map provisions that were scheduled to go out the end of October, is what we've been told, in October. He said, "We've put in a request to FEMA to issue revised preliminaries November the 30th." So, that slipped by a month. My next comment was, "The 30-day comment period should be through the end of November, based on that previous." His reply was, "Because new data being used for the revised preliminaries wasn't provided by the petitioner, FEMA will require a new 90-day appeal period." He says, "This was a surprise to me. I'm sorry I didn't have the proper understanding when I wrote you on 10-118." My question was, "If there were no issues after the end of the comment period, which we had anticipated to be in November, would the request for the letter of final determination from FEMA be in December?" And he right-wrote back and said, "Based on an 11/30 issuance, the 90-day appeal period should start February, March of 19, in May or June. After a 30-day cooling-off period for FEMA, we'll request a letter of final determination in the June-July 2019 period." My final question was, "The six-month wait period after issuance of the letter of final determination could make the maps effective in the summer of 19?" His response was, "Looking at December 19, January 20, December 2019 or January 2020 for the effective date." He said, "I'm sorry for the delays, both internal and beyond our control. My hope belief is that since we've already provided the draft data mapping for the appeals and received confirmation of acceptance, I frankly don't expect any further challenges, comments, delays, so long as we get FEMA to allow the revised preliminary release on 11/30." So, that's...
Thank you for that report. As you can see, the more we ask, the longer this thing gets delayed, and we really need to be talking to our federally elected officials, because they're sort of in control of this. Because this is nothing in the world but bureaucracy, on top of bureaucracy, and people that are not doing their jobs, that work for the state and the federal government. It's just that simple. And there's $5 million of insurance premiums in Beaufort County alone that can be saved if these guys will just get these maps out. That's a lot of money to circulate two or three times in Beaufort County. So, there are a lot of people who are paying. I've talked to people, we do this work, $6,000 to $7,000 for flood insurance is not unheard of. Some of these people are going to be out of the flood zone when the revisions come. So, I implore this board, and I'll have it back on the agenda next month if we don't do something this month, we need to be talking to our state senators and our elected representatives from North Carolina on this thing, because they can get together and put enough pressure on these people to actually do something. Because it's foot dragging, that's all it is. 2013 is when the requirement was to have the new assessment, because that's when the 100-year flood period ended, that all the design was based on for the original maps. So, what are we going in? We're going to be seven years late with this? That's typical of the government, so...
Well, I think when Congressman Walter James was here talking with us after, was after Florence or Michael?
Florence.
After Florence, indicated that, you know, Congress is struggling with flood insurance update and revisions, as well as some of the things that are happening on the West Coast. So, I, like you say, it appears that they just keep kicking it on, and the premiums are not enough, is what they claim. So, it's going to be hard for them to give up the $5 million. I think it's part of it.
I think that's part of it, too.
Okay, we're down to items for discussion. The first one is the water bill adjustment request. Sandra Smith?
My name is Sandra Smith. Thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you in regards to my water bill. Back in early spring, we had a, well, let me first start by saying, I pay my water bill every single month. It's on average $38.64 a month. I received a bill in September for $2,258.40. That's more water than I would probably use in, like, six, seven years, I think, is what I calculated out, maybe only five, but it was a long time. So, I had an original water leak back in the springtime. It was not due to neglect of not winterizing my home. It was due to the fact that when the house was originally installed, someone had set up a, they took from the meter, put PEX, or PVC, and then transitioned from PVC to a garden hose, put it underneath the brick stairway and in the wall of the house. So, when we had an inspection come out, when we purchased the house, and we went under the house, did not see any of this. When we opened the walls up, and when we had the leak, we were totally beside ourselves when we saw a garden hose. So, immediately, we called a professional general contractor plumber. They came out, we ripped the walls out, we went through, replaced, you know, replaced the hose, broke up the bricks steps, and then went through the entire rest of the house, went underneath the house to have them inspect, to make sure there was nothing else that looked like it was, you know, not up to code, or not, that looked like it had potential to fail. So, at that time, I received a phone call from the water company, saying, "Hey, you had a water leak." And I said, "Yes, we did." And she says, "Hey, you couldn't get an adjustment? And you just have to, there's a form to fill out, and it's an adjustment for the leak. It's a policy we have." I said, "Great." I was not told at that time, or I did not hear it from her, that was a one-time thing every three years, but regardless, that's really not important, because at the time, I would have taken it anyways, because, okay, sure. And I thought it was a great thing for her to call me and offer that as a service. In August, or July, it's the July bill that I received in August, we had the wettest July we had on record. My neighbors, it's the house that's out in Bellhaven on the river, we had so much rain that they thought the grass was just wet because of all the rain. And it wasn't until it stopped raining, because it had rained, like, I think, a week or so, straight, nonstop, that they discovered that it was coming from our house. They went over, they saw that, they turned off the water immediately, called us. We went out there immediately, and come to find out that, under the house where PEX and, PEX and the copper, because that's all that's left in the house now, blew out. So, we immediately had that fixed, and I actually called the water company at that time, saying, "Hey, we had this leak, didn't know how long, we didn't know how long it had been leaking." And it wasn't until I got the water bill that we saw the amount and how much. We asked the professionals, you know, that came in, because we, you know, we said, "Hey, look, we've done everything that we could possibly humanly do to make sure we didn't have another water leak. When we're gone for extended periods of time, we turn off the water, this is, we were just, you know, we were gone a week, a couple of weeks longer than normal, because we had some out-of-state business to handle." But, like I said, our neighbor handles the, watches over the property. The professional told us what possibly could have happened, because he said, "Look, it didn't look like it was damaged, and it looked like it, you know." He said, "What possibly could have happened is, we could have had a water hammer." And he said, "That could happen in your own backyard, it could happen a mile from your home. It's just something, it's a pressure on the lines, and it just happens to be, you had the weak spot," or whatever. And basically, there's no way to really prove if that actually happened, if what it was. All we know is, we did everything we could do in our power to make sure we didn't have another issue with a pipe bursting or breaking. The only, the one thing that I can say that was neglectful, the only person that was neglectful in this entire situation, I'm not trying to point fingers at anyone, is actually the meter reader. The meter reader actually, because it was raining, was probably in a rush, went to check the water meter, and even though it was running, didn't stop, say, "Wait, there's a problem here. You know, we should have, let me notify the homeowner, it shouldn't be running like this, turn it off." But they didn't. And the reason I say that they did that, because the leak actually ran over onto the second bill. So, somebody, so someone from the water department actually went and checked the meter. And so, that, I think, is not fair to me as a resident, because as a professional, I mean, just like the, I asked the water company, I said, "Don't we have any type of monitoring systems, anything that gives, like, a red flag that says, 'Hey, we have an excessive amount of water going out here, over here in this area, we probably need to send somebody out in the next day or so to check it out.'" You know, one, it's going to save water when you have water shortages and things of that nature, but also, it helps, you know, alleviate situations like that, like this. I would say, I ask, you know, is there any, you know, a lot of the utilities that I have at my other home are electronic, so, you know, they don't even get out of the car, it's all electronic. If something flags it and says, "Hey, there's excessive use," they get out physically, look at that unit, they go back out a second time. I was told that our water facilities is getting ready to install those, and we should have them in the next couple of months, which is fantastic. But now, I'm being penalized, even though I did everything in my power to make sure we didn't have any leaks, and now I'm being penalized for having a $2,300 bill. Now, I know you're, you know, I was advised that you never do adjustments, and that is pretty much a waste of air, but I don't think that's the case here, because this wasn't due to not winterizing my house. We didn't have a freeze. This was something that was freakish, it's water, if you will. You know, my ultimate outcome, and what I'm hoping for tonight, is to be granted the exception and have the waiver, the leak adjustment placed on this bill. I also, another possible option that I've actually talked to the water company about doing is, when I first filled out, when I did the first water adjustment, I said, "Can we cancel that one, or pay that one, since I didn't sign that adjustment, and then turn around and apply it to this one and pay that bill immediately?" And of course, you know, and then, of course, you know, come up to some sort of, a third option is to come up to some sort of mutual agreement that we could feel that's fair and adequate for everybody. I mean, for me to be a resident who pays my bills, who invests in my property, invests in the county, to be penalized with a $2,300 water bill, and not having any type of compassion for it, I think is, it's really hard, and unfair. You know, I've, like, I invested $40,000 in a brand-new bulkhead into, so, one, it increases our value in our property, but also increases the value on the waterfronts of Bellhaven and our community. You know, we're constantly, you know, trying to use people that are from the community to put money and keep money in our community and make it the best we can. So, this time, I ask that you please see compassion and grant me an adjustment, or some sort of solution to this, so I'm not penalized for a $2,300 water bill that truly, really wasn't, you know, wasn't where I left the hose running full throttle and filled up a pool, and just said, "Heck with it, we're turning on everything and letting it run." So, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know what you're going through. I just went through the same thing, and the policy is that we don't make adjustments, only at one time every three years. So, unless you can work out a payment plan with the water department... So unless you can work out a payment plan with, with the water department and get it approved, then there's not a whole lot we can do.
That's actually not what I was told. What I was actually told from the water department is the only people that can actually make an exception to this policy is you folks. And that's why I'm here. If I thought this was something that was my fault and, and I was totally negligent of, I wouldn't be up here wasting your time. We've got too much important business here to be peddling with a water bill.
Mr. Chairman.
I truly.
How old is your house?
It was actually moved here from Virginia in the 50s.
Who was your plumber?
My, the plumber that had come out.
Oh, your plumber?
Who came out and, and, and fixed this right now?
No, but it was plumbed originally in the 50s.
We, I, we just purchased the property about three years ago.
Did you have a home inspection?
We had everyone come out, yes. This was in the wall unforeseen, you couldn't see it. But when we, when, when it happened, we, like I said, we had to bust open the walls, which are still actually open, if you'd like to come to my home and see them. And on this, and actually on this second leak, because it was under the house, so I was very fortunate it did not destroy any of my personal property inside my house or anything like that. We actually lifted the floor, we, we pulled back the flooring so they could actually really get in underneath that ha, end of the house and see what was really go, what had truly happened because they were totally perplexed because they had inspected and they said, look, there, you know, this stuff is good, pipes look good, there was no, no corrosion and no cracks, nothing that, that would have alarmed them to say, hey, you need to fix this. The only thing I've been told that, that I, I was just advised this evening that the water company went out a second time to reread the meter because when I got the second bill and it was $100 and, or a cup, way more than normal, she says, oh, well, you probably want to change out your on and off switch that's right outside the meter. No problem, I'll probably have it done this week just because we, we don't put things off. I don't, you know, it's not, you know, I'm one that maintains all of my properties, I don't let them, you know, wait till they break. I'm proactive. And when, and this was something what we were totally proactive with. And I, I think that, that this is a, a situation where I think there should be an exception to the policy and then maybe at this point, motion to have the policy looked at and, and modified at some, at some, in some way. Because, you know, as a citizen, a $2,300 water bill is excessive. I mean, it's not, you know, in the, you know, it's, it's, it's more, we couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't use all that water. And the thing is, if we want to get really silly and crazy technical, the water's being recycled and the, and the county's gotten it right back because it's going right to the water, the, the aquifers. So, I mean, we can be silly, silly, uh, uh, technical, but I, I don't really want to do that. I, I just want to have some leniency and some compassion for this situation and, you know, maybe make this, you know, the first win of the today and tomorrow that, that we, we do an adjustment of some sort or, or like I, you know, or just do a secondary adjustment. Like you said, you can only do one adjustment. Well, I can understand that, but if we take and I, I void out the first adjustment and pay that, I'm, I think that would be fair to do that and then put the adjustment towards this bill. I think that's a fair compromise versus if you, if you're not inclined to say, hey, we're just going to give you a secondary waiver. Sorry. Go ahead.
Any, any other questions? Does any of the staff have any comments?
They were very, very nice, just for the rec, I mean, I've never had a bad experience ever.
I will say, after speaking with Ms. Smith, she is on automatic draft services, so I told her until this was resolved, that we would just bill her the minimum, which is $38.64 because it is a second home and no one's there. She has accumulated late charges because of that, so however the board directs, you know, I'm willing, I can adjust off the late fees that she's accumulated and waiting to be, to be her.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I feel like as far as late fees go, it's well within the policy and within our authority to adjust those if Ms. Smith agrees to a payment plan.
In regards to a payment plan, are we talking for an adjusted amount or, or, or the full $2,300? That, that's, I think it's the $2,300 is the real stickler that I think is the not, is the, the reason I'm here in hoping that we could do some sort of adjustment.
And the payment plan was offered when we, when she called.
A lot of standing up to the mic.
And the payment plan was offered when she, when I spoke with her in late September. According, I went strictly by the policy, 25% down, and then we, then we would work out some kind of payment arrangement accordingly. But at that time, she did not want to do that. She wanted to speak to the board. So we just came to a, a resolution just to continue to draft her account every month until she came to talk to the board to see what the decision would be made.
Is Christina aware of the situation?
Yes. She's aware of it. And since we went back out there and did a recheck, the usage is, is now zeroed out, so she's back down to her normal zero usage bill. The problem has been fixed. And I also had one of the field techs to go back out there just to check on our end with our equipment and that's when he noted that your cutoff valve was outdated and it needs to be replaced.
And that's, and that's the first I've heard of and I said, no problem, I'll take care of it.
But other than that, that's, that's where we're at right now.
And that's the thing, the other important note is, like she said, I've continued to pay my normal bill. It's not where I've said, oh, I'm not paying anything. I've continued to pay because it's what I do.
Mr. Egan?
I think like Gary was saying, we've run into a previous situation, a few months back with some local church, and I think it was about $1,800, $1,900 and unfortunately, a year prior, they had a problem and it was $200, $300 bill and that was waived and then we had the $1,800 and we put them on a payment plan as, as per the policy.
I think the big, big difference between my situation and the nonprofit church organization, which I think, I personally would have probably said, yeah, it's, it's a church, they're nonprofit, was their failure was because of non-winterizing, they had a pipe freeze. That's not the situation here. This is not a neglectful situation. If it was neglectful, like I said, I wouldn't be here wasting our time.
What's the wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that she go on a payment plan and we waive the fees. I understand we can do that.
What was your motion?
She goes on a payment plan for the full amount and we waive the fees.
Waive the late fees?
Yeah.
Late fees?
Late fees.
Okay.
Yeah, and, on a payment plan.
They, they don't need a motion for that, like, like she said.
I don't think so. I think that's within, within my authority to grant that to them.
All right.
I'll say again, motion.
Well, we don't.
So we just don't like this?
We don't like the Texas stuff.
Oh, okay. That's it.
Is there anyone that wants to waive the bill? That's really the question. That would take a motion.
I motion that.
You probably would second the motion.
I would too. Have any of you not returned? I might be in your seat next time, you never know. But I know you said something about a, a, a payment plan. What would, and after, if that was, I'll let you go ahead and vote first before I ask my question.
We, we don't, we don't have a vote on that.
Okay. Well, I, let's, let's see what else we have. We have the option of maybe voiding the first one, paying that in full immediately and, and applying the adjustment to this one.
Is there, is there a motion to do either one?
That's the same thing, the, same thing.
That's a precedent.
You can't do anything, you're going to have everybody in the county have.
But like I said, the key thing is non-neglect, neglect. I was not neglectful. If I was neglectful, then I'd be 100% responsible for that bill, but I was not neglectful.
Well, in, in their case, the water was going over into a ditch and it was back on the property, so they, they, they were not aware.
But that was because they didn't winterize, is what I was told.
Yeah.
And see, winterizing, that, not winterizing your property is neglectful. I winterized my property. I put the little plastic things on, we do the, we make sure the pipes, they don't freeze and everything, doing the responsible thing. This situation was not a situation of neglect. This was a situation of something beyond our physical control. It could have happened to any of us and that's why I, I feel that there should be some sort of leniency or some sort of, of adjustment.
We're hearing, hearing no comment.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. So what is, so what are you saying?
The payment plan and wa.
So, okay, with that being said, in regards to the payment plan, what is the board saying is an acceptable payment plan? I mean, if I pay an extra $5 every month on my.
We already have a policy on that.
We'll reach out to you and come up with a.
You'll, you'll need to consult with.
And so now that, that you've decided that to, to turn me down in regards to that, what is the, I was told that there's nobody I can go, if, I can't take this matter any further. I basically, I'm here and there's.
To my knowledge, this is not part of the North Carolina Utilities Commission. There, there is.
I mean, what is my recourse as a citizen?
Even if you could, if it's on her side of the meter, it is her responsibility.
Correct.
There's no out in this thing.
So what, but in regards to the first adjustment that I put, I never signed it. I never, I didn't even fill out the form.
Chairman, I move, we move to the next item.
Okay. Sandra?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks. All right. Item number two is Economic Development Grant, Project New. Martin?
Thank you. This is a continuation from the public hearing. The request is to provide an economic development grant to Project New to establish a seafood processing facility in eastern Beaufort County. As was discussed the earlier, the project would be a total grant of about $52,000 over a five-year period. That would be 2019 to 2023, assuming the company invests 1.5 million in building outfit and $250,000 in equipment. Just in terms of the location of the facility, the unemployment rate in that area is about 7% and the poverty rate is much higher than the average in Beaufort County. The Economic Development Grant would only be paid after the county has collected property taxes for the particular year in question and also would mirror the Community Development Block Grant rules that the 25 jobs be created through the Economic Development Grant in the first two years and be held for five years. So that'd be through 2024. So the request is from the staff that the Board of Commissioners vote that the county manager, myself and the attorney work with Project New to provide an estimated $52,000 Economic Development Grant in, to support with other economic development allies the creation of 25 full-time jobs and investment of 1.7, sorry, 1.75 dollars in the project.
Million.
Million. Did I just, oh, yeah, sorry. 1.5 million.
We're not talking about paying $52,000 upfront, we're talking about over five years after they have paid their taxes.
Yeah.
Second. All right, got a motion, then we got a second. Take that recommendation from Martin, all those in favor.
Fred, can I ask you one question?
Yes.
How long has this place been in business?
The, the new operation would be new, but the company that is behind it has been, it's a family-owned business and I'm afraid I don't know totally the answer to the question, but I believe many, many years. I would imagine over 20 years.
Between 20 and 30.
Yeah, 20 and 30. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Nope.
Question? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay. The, the, the grant from the Department of Commerce, we voted on December 13th and I assume there'll be some sort of press release after that.
Thank you very much. Next is the draft, Lefford County Solar Energy Facilities Ordinance. Jamie?
Good evening. So the Solar Committee worked with the Planning Department to develop the draft Beaufort County Solar Energy Facilities Ordinance. At the October 1st, 2018 regular meeting, the board voted 5 to 2 in favor of adopting the ordinance. Statutes require that for an ordinance to be adopted at first reading, it must be a unanimous vote. The first vote was not unanimous, so a second reading and vote is required. Hopefully, everybody's had time to review the draft ordinance in its entirety. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have before you take a vote.
This was on the agenda the previous month. Any, any questions or comments before we take a vote?
I have some comments.
All right.
I'm, I'm not going to vote for this for the same reasons that I gave last month. We have never done an ordinance that was not vetted by the entire board. The committee put this ordinance together, it's only two or three people's thought. There is a, there are a lot of things that are subjective in this. This, we had an ordinance. Keep in mind, we had an ordinance. This ordinance, the purpose of this ordinance is to slow down or stop solar development in Beaufort County. I realize there are a lot of sins that go with the solar industry. They have carried sacks full of money to politicians in Raleigh and sacks full of money to politicians in Washington DC to get benefits that are highly unusual. And they have the right to raise your power rates, the, the utilities that use these things without going through the Utilities Commission. Those are on the upper end, I can't do anything about those. Citizens in Beaufort County that have land have an opportunity to make about five or six times as much in one year leasing to a solar company as they would farming. I'm for the farmers and the landowners in Beaufort County. If they have an opportunity to make some good money out of this, it is not up to me to punish them because of the sins of state and federal politicians. And the other thing, this particular ordinance is drawn in such a way that it has a lot of subjective rather than measurable or scientific parameters to be met and you're going to have some lawsuits over this before it gets over with. So this is a cost Beaufort County money ordinance. The ordinance that we had is, is perfectly satisfactory to do what we need to do and I, and I can't support it because of that. It's going to hurt our property owners, they're not going to be able to take advantage of this. And number two, a lot of the environmental concerns that I hear about this are just about as phony as a $3 bill. And I'll be happy to debate anybody that wants to debate that anytime and anywhere about the untruths that have been told. I don't, I mean, how many people do you know of that died from a solar farm? Answer, none. How many are sick? None. So this is a phony process and I'm not going to be a part of it, I'm going to vote against it.
Any other comments from anybody that was on the committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And you mentioned it, we had a committee of three commissioners plus Jamie, who's the head of the Planning Board and the Mideast Commission. We reviewed a number of statutes around different counties. Legals look at it, so we, we know it's, it's a legal document. And there's a lot of misinformation being thrown around. Number one, protects the property owner and protects the taxpayer of Beaufort County. And that's what this thing basically says. It doesn't stop anybody from putting a solar energy facility in, on somebody's property. No circumstances. Now, you notice I don't use the word farm. Farm was developed by the solar industry to make the residents think of swaying corn fields in the wind. So there's solar energy facilities, that's number one. When I talk about protecting the taxpayer, there's a thing in here that's decommissioning. Currently, right now, if one of these facilities, and every three to five years, they change corporations, LLCs. So at the end of 20 years or so, you may not even be able to find it. Who's stuck with the bill? The way our existing ordinance says, it's the landowner. If you can't find the LLC, so, and we also, the committee took that into consideration to protect the landowner. So we haven't stopped them, but we're protecting the landowner. Because they have to put up a bond issue or a decommissioning fee. The other thing is, a lot of people tell us, they drive down the road and you see nothing but panel after panel after panel. So what did we do? We require a buffer zone with vegetation. They can pick the type of shrubs, but they ought to be 15 feet high and eight foot wide once they grow it. The end of five years or three years, I don't recall the exact number.
Three years.
Three years? So you're not going to see them. Again, it doesn't stop anybody. Now, waivers could be granted on the vegetate if, if the landowner next to it says, you know, I'm, I consider other things, I'm all right with it. So that's what this thing does. There's no legal issues here. There's no problem with enforcing it. People just want to slow the process down. This protects the taxpayer, it protects the landowner, and it beautifies the site. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, and excuse me, we're making, the total process under the ordinance costs is about $500. On the old ordinance, you know who was paying for it? The taxpayer. So, we put in a $500 fee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion too. All right, got a motion? Second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the county clerk disseminate the, this ordinance to all the counties in the state and also to the jurisdictions within Beaufort County, the counties and cities.
You make a motion?
Second.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment to do with that. What are you going to do when you hear that huge gag from all these other counties when they look at this piece of junk for an ordinance?
I don't.
You don't know they're going to gag.
I don't think that they would gag. That's maybe your opinion. All right, we got a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
Anybody second?
Who's, who's, Gary second?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I'd like to convey an apology to two ladies that appeared before the board last week, last board meeting and at the break had a discussion with Commissioner Richardson to discuss the solar ordinance. Comments were made that I found very unprofessional, not worthy of this, this board. He stated the following. Little girls, this is my sandbox, you go play in your own and go play your game somewhere's else. These comments were rude, therefore I want to apologize for those comments that were made.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to restate, I wasn't going to do this because it serves no purpose whatsoever, but since Commissioner Busio brought this up, I'm going to restate what I said last time. The big thing that's going on in this, and these guys got themselves dragged into it, is part of this family that's going to lease at least 600 acres of land is a million bucks a year, part of that family's going to get all the money. You're looking at those that are not going to get the money that are sitting here. This is a family fight and Beaufort County Commissioners have gotten themselves involved in it that, like they usually do, stumbling and staggering. So, I did say exactly what you said to those ladies because they were very unreasonable, very emotional, and you can't deal with it. And I refuse to deal with it again.
I'll make a motion, but I didn't make a motion. I just apologize on behalf of the board.
Not on behalf, you apologize on behalf of the six of you that want to apologize, but you need to take me out of there. I'm not a part of.
I think, I've been heavily involved in this since day one. A group of us went out and met with the board at Terrace Hill Crescent School. The reason that we're in this box, and I won't call it a sandbox, but the reason we're in this box is because our original ordinance was not strong enough.
For what?
And.
To accomplish what?
To eliminate setbacks and location and that sort of thing, so.
This ordinance goes far beyond that.
I think at the end of the day, I live in farming community. I don't live in Smallwood, but I live in farming community. We are farmers, we have farmland, and, you know, we don't always get along with our neighbor, but at the end of the day, the purpose of this was to try to make it a win-win situation for the communities. And I think we've done the best. You know, it's like everything else, when you go into courtroom, somebody's going to win and somebody's going to lose. But I've had a lot of people tell me that they're very happy with the outcome of this. So, I feel strongly about it and I'm very proud of the work that they've done and I'm proud of the Commissioners and our staff because we have worked behind the scenes because we didn't have the teeth. We didn't have the way that we could have handled this up front like we do today. So, I apologize for anybody's feelings that's been hurt. So, we'll go from there and we'll go into the next one. So, item number four is a bid approval for the HMGP Rescoping and FMA 2016. Lisa, you going to explain all these acronyms?
I'll explain as much as you want me to explain. I got pages of explaining. But the short version is that we are bringing before you tonight two structures that are part of the rescapement grant. And just to clarify, the rescapement grant, these are the last two of a seven-home project grant. And we're bringing before you two, the first two homes of the FMA 2016 elevation grant. And these are the first two of five. I almost brought, and I didn't because it was so ugly, I have a huge tube, those big post-it notes in my office that has all this. If any of you want to come by, I'll be glad to go through all of it, but that's what we're bringing before you tonight. And I brought you, each had the bid tab. And if you look at your bid tab of the four structures that were all bid on, and we did hold a pre-construction meeting, that was August the 30th. And our bid opening did, just as a side note, it did get delayed because of Florence, so we had to back that up a few days, but we did open them. And Gilbert Everett was awarded all four, actually. And just so that you are aware, because I thought someone might ask me, Gilbert Everett currently does not have any projects under construction with us. This is, this will be the only four he'll have. If he had had other projects already in progress, then that could have been an issue for him to take all four, but he doesn't have any, so he's perfectly capable of handling that.
Mr. Chairman? Has he done work for us before?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. His work is.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, he left 20-some thousand dollars on the table.
Yeah, he, he's gotten, he's gotten pretty good at outbid. In fact, you were at the bid opening and one of the contractors said, just shook his head. So, but he's, he's very efficient, but he's very good.
Any, any questions?
Is there, with him, I mean, he wanted to be at Fair and Square, but is there a timeline? Does he have to finish these jobs?
Yes, um, yes, yes, Commissioner Booth, there is. There are contracts they sign for each, end of each property. There is a compete deadline, a completion deadline.
He's aware of that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's in all the contract.
And since, and this is one of my pet peeves, I don't, I just don't ask you. I ask everybody to come up here with this. How about change orders?
Yes, change orders are dealt with between, you mean between the homeowner and the contractor?
Like, like, like I know he's the little bidder. If he come back three weeks from now and say he can't do it for that job, say he ran.
Oh, no. No, no, no.
That's off the table.
That's off the table. No, sir. If he, if they, correct, that's correct. The home, if there are, if there are, let's take for example.
Long as you answer my question.
Didn't he post a bond?
I'll just give you a short example. I think Commissioner Evans has experience with, if you, they will give you ingress and egress. And let's say you had a small deck that was your original ingress and egress. If, if for whatever reason they have to make that wider or deeper to accommodate the height, then the homeowner will contribute to make that, and they'll work as much as they can within the budget to make that happen.
You pay for it.
Correct.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
Yes, sir.
Is he going to start all four of these projects at one time?
Probably not. He will probably stagger them because these are, the homeowners will have to vacate the properties. So, he will work together with the homeowner on when they want to start. We have to start within a certain timeline, but because the homeowners will have to vacate and one of the reasons I say that is the holidays, with the holidays coming up, some of the homeowners may have trouble doing that. So, they will most likely get staggered. Now, if they are in close, like the, the two that are in Washington, he will probably start those either first or the Bath Bell Haven first, just because of logistics. But a lot of, a lot of the start date depends on the homeowner and how quickly they can get out or what they need. I'm sorry, this is the first day I've been able to talk, when they can, can accommodate it.
And one other question, I'll be through. Does he get upfront money on these projects to start with?
Yes and no. When they start the project, a work authorization is drawn for, normally they're done in increments of about 20 to 30,000. So, a work authorization is drawn and then as they, as they complete work and that work is inspected, we draw off of that, that work authorization is tied to a purchase order, we draw off of that purchase order. So, then when that 30,000 has been expended, then they do another, the second, and there's usually, a work, a project typically will have three to four work authorizations. And they're usually 20 to 30,000 dollar increments and they, that's how they do it.
So, I know, what he'll do when they got COVID and COVID because I did a lift.
Right.
And he can't lift it so many one time. He runs out.
Correct.
And metal and all that, so, and he wants his money once he gets it up, blocked, equipped in the place, then he'll move to the next one and then he'll bring in a.
That's right. And the other thing that, two things that could potentially delay the starting of these is the fact that we've got so much work right now happening in Carteret County, Onslow County, some of the counties that were hardest hit, that we, we are going to be in a real competition to even get, get these, you know, so, and weather, we're going into the worst part of the year weather-wise, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like my turn. I won't be supporting any more of these kinds of projects. I've sat here for 22 years. I saw these things start off as fixing some person's house that couldn't repair the roof, as making other minor repairs, 10 and 15,000 dollars. I saw it morph and go into 50 and 60,000 dollars for raising houses. Now, keep in mind that with these houses, these people have the opportunity to buy flood insurance, which will pay for part of this. What, why not?
No, sir. That is not correct. Every property that I have mitigated since I've been here in 2011, the homeowner has to have flood insurance.
For to make it work?
Correct. You had to have flood insurance at the time of the loss and the accumulated losses that make it eligible. The whole purpose of mitigation is to stop the flow of payouts on flood insurance. That's why they raise them. Because if you have severe repetitive loss, which is an accumulation of loss, that's when the property becomes eligible to be elevated because that cuts off the flow of money that they're paying in flood claims. So, I've, we've never elevated anything.
You think it didn't have flood insurance?
No, sir.
Well, let me go on into this a little bit further than, for, I still don't intend to support these projects because I don't want my money wasted like this. One of these houses is 114,000 dollars that the county has taken on the responsibility to rehab and raise. Another house is 99,700 dollars. Another house is 79,000 dollars and another house is 89,000 dollars. The problem that I have with this is I'm familiar with at least three of these properties. One I can't find, but I won't find it in the next week or two. One of these houses is not worth rehabbing. It's down on Sixth Street in the, right in the midst of the flood zone. We've been doing buyouts, they've been doing buyouts on these types of things when they spent money on it. It is a rental unit. Another house is, is probably a vacation home. I don't know whether anybody's living there full-time or not, I'll have to go there and see that. Another house, the people that live in the house look like they have the money to fix their mess. So, what we're doing is, we are, we are using the taxpayers' money to improve people's property. They're getting a free ride out of this. You know, that, I don't want my money wasted and used this way. I will not be supporting any more of these projects that come up at all. We don't need to be doing this. And the really good news is what Walter Jones told us when he was here after Hurricane Florence, and nobody heard it, but I heard it because I was listening for that kind of stuff. He said, "We're trying to find a way so we don't keep doing multiple payouts." And what that tells me is, they're going to fix this stuff so that all of this comes to an end and it's going to save taxpayers a whole lot of money. If you want to own a house that's in the flood zone and get it flooded every time the water gets up, that is your problem. That is not my problem and that is not the taxpayers' problem, by the way. So, this whole thing has become an exercise in socialism and that's all it is, is socialism. We're going to take your money and we're going to do this guy over here a really good deal. We don't need to be doing that.
Anybody else?
Let me ask the one other question.
Yes.
Isn't some of these homeowners paying a percentage of this money they have the house raised, on some of them?
Some of them. Some of them are 90, 10.
Yes.
But, one thing I will say, Commissioner Richardson, is that the, the savings is that, once a house is elevated, then there are no more flood claims against that property.
That's right.
So, it, it, and some of these houses, most of these houses that have been elevated in Beaufort County are on, well, I'll take that back, all of the houses that have been elevated are on the severe repetitive loss list, which means total claims paid out on the house exceed 75% of the value of the house. So, they, by elevating them, we are not paying out those flood claims repeatedly. So, yes, it is an expense to elevate it, but in the long run, and that's why they do it. They do it because it's cheaper to elevate it than to keep paying out the claim. So, that, that's the, that's the purpose.
Let me respond to that by saying this. If you're living in a house and it's flooded one time and you get paid for that one time and you continue to live in it while it's flooded again, that is your problem. And I'm hoping the federal government is going to fix this for a one-time payout instead of this becoming a huge exercise in socialism. And that's all it is.
Well, I was there too and I heard Mr. Jones say exactly what you said, Ms. Williams. He said, "We're going, we're going to fix these houses the first time, we're looking at ways to fix these houses the first time."
That's not what he said.
Well, that's what you just said.
That's not what he said.
And, and if you do it again, you're on your own. And if, and if you raise a house, if you elevate a house one time, it don't have, now, he said something, my house been flooded three times. I haven't had it elevated, but it's a good decent house to live in. I mean, it's, I ain't going to die in it because it's flooded. But, but, but if you can raise it one time and get it out of flood zones level, you don't have to worry about spending flood insurance on it again. And that's the, that's the purpose of the program.
Well, and you keep it in the tax base. But I do want to, one thing, Commissioner Richardson, was you asked us when we were here several months back to contact our elected officials about the delay in the maps and you were 100% right. And I went back and I did write Congressman Jones and, you know, for what it was worth, but I just wanted to let you know I did do that and you were 100% right. We all need to do that. Thank you. Do we have our motion or?
I'm ready.
You can have a motion, hey.
I don't.
I thought we did.
Yeah, me and Jerry.
Kenny, do we have a motion?
Do it again.
I don't think you had a motion.
Let's do it, let's do it again.
Go ahead.
So, move.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor approving these grants, raise your right hand. As opposed. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
I, the next item, we're not going to be able to do it in five minutes, so we're going to go ahead and write.
Hostile environment.
And we'll be back in 15 minutes. 17. Okay, we're going down to item number five, the jail medical plan, and we have Chief Deputy Rose and James Mattson.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. On the last Commissioners' meeting, that was a discussion in reference to the medical plan that, that for years has been a part of the process of jail health, but we did find out and discuss that there was a provision of the statute that wasn't being upheld and that the medical plan wasn't being brought before the board. We're here to remedy that tonight. There was also part of a discussion over a couple of things that could, or a couple of different ways that we can do the medical plan when it, when we were talking about the specific issue of notifying family members or emergency contacts if we have an inmate that is admitted to a hospital or has a serious injury or a serious illness. So, hopefully with the information that you have, that we're going to hit on and discuss each of those, each of those things that we discussed in the last meeting, I'll go over a few of those and then either, either the Health Director or myself can answer any questions that you have after we go over that. So, in your packet, you have the statute that goes over the medical care. So in your packet, you have the statute that goes over the medical care of prisoners, that's General Statute 153A-225. You had that in your packet for last meeting and this meeting, and just wanted to make sure that you understood the guidelines that we're looking for with the medical plan. You also have a copy of the Beaufort County Detention Center Medical Plan. That was a draft copy when you initially had, had that. We do have a signed copy, we have a copy that's signed by the sheriff and by the Health, the Record, that's ready per your prerogative, if you choose to do so, to, to approve that tonight, so we can have a medical plan moving forward into next year. That medical plan as been, as being put forward discusses and goes to all of the parts of the statute to make sure that we are in compliance with the last bit put in forward in the approval. As far as the discussion goes, as far as a notification of family or emergency contacts, if somebody is seriously injured, or seriously ill, or is admitted into the hospital, we decided to go with the route that I think is more comparable, and, and it, it goes along the pathway that it should go, is that is a policy and a procedure, and not part of the medical plan. So we have presented revisions of policy that we do have for the inmate medical procedures, which you have before you, which I'll, I'll point out and read the section that we've added. It's on page five of five of the inmate medical procedures that you have in your book, and it says, "In the event an inmate becomes seriously ill or injured while in the facility, or is transported out, or is admitted to a hospital and is seriously ill or injured, the sheriff will be notified. The sheriff will assess security and privacy concerns and may direct staff to notify the emergency contact listed by the inmate." That is, there was no language in the policy that addressed that before, so that is a new part of the policy that is, that is being added, to hopefully address all of the concerns that have been brought before the board over the last handful of months, and quite frankly, to the Anderson Whitley Wells family, for the time that they have been concerned about it and, and pushing for a policy to have, the requests that they've made for a policy for anything, if, if the policy existed, I did my best to make sure that they, that they received the information, to the tune of many requests, and it's over, over a hundred documents that was released to the family over, over the last eighteen months or so. So with, with that, that is the information that I have, unless there's any questions that the board has.
Mr. Chairman, what order are we taking this up in? We've got two things to do, is the Beaufort County Detention Center Medical Plan, and then we have a policy item as a separate item. We gonna approve the policy, along with the plan, and if the policy is changed, does that come to, or added, or does that come back to the Commissioners?
I'll, I'll raise that question with the, with the staff. This is the first time I've seen a policy in my four years from the Sheriff's Department come before us.
Again, I would, I would defer you to the county attorney, but I think as, as it has been pretty clearly stated to the board, that the sheriff has his policies and procedures, and the Board of Commissioners doesn't have the authority to tell the sheriff what to do. I think the sheriff has put this in his policy, that you can see that he has that in his policy, but whether you approve his policy, or whether you disapprove his policy, it's still his policy.
That's right.
So, you know, I, I think the main point here is, the jail health plan is being presented for the board to see and approve if you so choose to approve, and the sheriff is putting forth and showing you that he has a policy that addresses the concerns that the board has made, but again, it is the sheriff's policy.
It was, it was my understanding, when it was put on the agenda, the medical plan was what we were taking action on.
Well, but, what you're saying is, if this is a policy the sheriff, and, and as you say, the Commissioners don't have anything to do with it, I take serious issue with that. But why don't we move the item in question from policy and make it a part of the plan? It is the pla-, is a part of the plan in many other counties.
If you can list the counties that it is, I would like it, because I was not able to find that.
I'll have to dig them out, but I'm
Even Lincoln County, that was brought for us as an example, they have a medical plan, and then they have a policy that addresses the notification. So I mean, if, if you do have that list of names, I would love to hear it, and then I'll, I can research further, but we were not able to locate a county.
Well, I have to look to see the counties, but it is mentioned in, the Lincoln County plan, I thought was pretty strong in mentioning that, and I've seen a couple of others that talk about
Lincoln County's was a policy. They had a medical plan, and then it was covered in the policy that
Well, is there any reason that we could not take that paragraph and make it a part of the medical plan, so that the Commissioners have some control over this? Very little control, I acknowledge, because the sheriff has to make the ultimate decision. Don't argue with that at all, but it needs to be a part of the plan. It doesn't need to be a part of the policy, because sheriff throw the policy out in the window next week, laugh at you. So with that, I'll make a motion that the policy item that addresses, and I can tell you the exact item that I'm talking about, item eight on page two thirty-five of our book, that it be moved and become a part of the medical plan. Otherwise, you haven't done anything.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
David, do you have a thought on this? Is that something that we can do?
I believe the manager
Was correct.
Correct, that the policy, the policy, and that's the sheriff's bailiwick, and as far as moving number eight over after number seven on the plan, I don't think it makes
Mr. Chairman, you don't think what?
I don't think that makes that big a deal to move that over there.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't think it makes a big deal to move it over there either. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Chief Deputy Charlie Rose, does the medical plan as written meet the requirements of 153A-225?
With approval of the board, yes.
With the approval of the board. So that would be in full compliance of the statute?
Yes.
I don't see any reason to move the policy in the, we're meeting the requirements of the statute, and the following, and that, the policy is the policy which, that the sheriff can write policies.
Then this exercise tonight is a farce.
Well, then, to make accusations, again, is very unprofessional.
Oh, it's very professional.
No, it isn't.
It's my part of my job, I was elected, do that, Mr. Buzzio. You don't understand what professionalism is. I'm doing my job protecting citizens of this county.
At least I don't call grown women girls, or say go play and play
You're a boy. How's that?
Go play in the sandbox. You're very
Look, this is petty.
Mr. Chairman, I cannot support moving policies into the statute. The statute stands on its own.
This is, this exercise is a farce.
If, if I remember, what we asked you to do was to bring back the revised medical plan for the board's approval, and that you would address the policy as it related to the notification.
I believe that I'm, I've complied with each request that the board has made.
All right. All right, it, under the state statute, we are supposed to approve the medical plan. We've got a motion on the floor.
Well, yeah, my motion, this is the one you're referring to, right?
Your motion on the floor. Is there a second to his motion to move the policy reference to be an item number eight? Is that right?
Yes.
To the medical plan? Is there?
I'll second.
You'll second that? Okay, we got a second.
I got a question.
Yes.
So I will turn it, this, this section that we're moving, the policy, and the, under the medical plan, this is the policy that we have discussed and discussed and discussed and called and called and called about, and the Institute of Government, AG's office, and everybody told us that we didn't have that authority. We could pass, we could pass all the policies we want, but it was up to the sheriff whether he enforced them or not, is that correct?
That's essentially correct.
Thank you.
Well, let me ask you a question. We approved the, the statute and the medical plan, and we put the policy in the plan and approve it as one, the sheriff can take, she can change that policy at any time, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, if the policy stays where it is now, he can change it at any time. If you make it a part of the medical plan that's approved by the Commissioners, he can't change it without coming to us. That doesn't reduce his authority, he still has to decide, just as the language in this says, whether you're entitled to a visitation or not, and what the security concerns are. It doesn't diminish his authority at all, but it, it puts the Commissioners where the Commissioners need to be on this particular issue.
Oh, well, if I may on that, is that, it's, the medical plan is very specific in what it says that it requires. Yes, that there's, there are plenty of other jails that are run by, by entities that are not sheriff's offices, but the entities that are run by sheriff's office, they, they stick to the medical plan, that's after the guidance that they get from the North Carolina Sheriff's Association, the North Carolina Jail Administrators Association, and from guidance that they're given through the Department of Health and Human Services, which is the state entity that inspects the, the healthcare in the jail, and all of the procedures that go along with that. So that is what their recommendation is. You know, we were brought forth with, with suggestions from the board, and we have put that into a policy, which is where that information needs to be. You know, the, the putting into the medical plan was an end around that was actually given by the school of government, saying, "Well, if you can't compel this way, then maybe you can try this way." So just to get through everything that I'm saying is, is that where we come down to it right now is, is that you are being provided by the sheriff, by me, and by the jail administrator, everything that the board says they want, but it's not exactly what you wanted. So therefore, the board, you're telling the board that they need to go against it. That's, that's the truth.
Well, that's, I'm disagreeing with the, with the method that this is, is being enforced, because this statute over here, 153A-225, is the minimum standard. There's no prohibition against going, putting other things in the medical plan, if the powers that be deem it desirable and necessary. So this has been such a big issue, that as you said yourself, the sheriff can change the policy any day he wants to. So if you put it over there, next week, he's gonna take, he can take that out and laugh at you and say, "Well, I got around those guys, I showed them." If it is in the medical plan, then we, the Commissioners have some control over what is going on. This issue comes up again, at least we can ask questions. Plus, it protects the public, because it has a whole lot more strength than into a policy which everybody's admitting here can be changed overnight and it, on a whim. So I'm just, I'm just trying to get the best thing that I can get for the citizens of Beaufort County, and I think that's what we need to do.
Commissioner
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see if the medical plan stay as written, 157. I think that's for the better for the people of Beaufort County, taking care of, a lot easier to handle, straightforward, meets the statute. That's my recommendation.
Got a motion on the floor?
Got a motion and a second on the floor, to combine the language, page two thirty-five, with the medical plan.
Yes.
Is there any more discussion before we take a vote? Do, does anybody have a question about what the vote is, what the motion is concerning?
No, we're not voting on the medical plan, we're voting on the motion.
And the motion
Has to do with item eight, because I've got some questions about the medical plan.
Okay? Those in favor of combining and moving that over to the medical plan, raise your hand. Those opposed? Okay?
I make a motion to, to approve the medical plan as written, 157.
I'll second that.
All right, got a motion and a second, now we're looking for a discussion.
Okay, a couple of things here. You're referring to the statute and, and, and trying to stick with this. The, the statute on item number one, the last sentence in there says, "Additionally, within three calendar days of arrival to the facility, each inmate will receive a full health assessment by a member of the medical board." Why a full health assessment? Why not a health assessment as is specified in General Statute 158, 53A-225, which is much less than a full health assessment?
Not sure what the word is in the, let's see over here.
It's in paragraph one, is
Oh, paragraph one, the last sentence.
No, the general statute here, you was comparing to that, I was just trying to find out.
Well, that
You mean the fourteen days versus, he said full versus
Says fourteen days, but doesn't say a full health assessment. It says that all we're obligated to do is to provide emergency help, and we're obligated to do some screening for tuberculosis and venereal diseases. That's what the statute says. The statute does not refer to a full health assessment.
Well, it does say that we'll provide adequate and protect the health and welfare of the prisoners, and
Mm-hmm.
That's what we feel is needed, to make sure that they don't have any health conditions that are gonna be there, so by doing a full assessment, we determine whether they have any conditions for us to worry about.
A full health assessment on a prisoner could cost three or four thousand dollars, whereas a screening for tuberculosis and venereal disease would, would, would cost a hundred bucks or less.
Full assessment is a history on their, their, their medical history, and us to do their blood pressure, do chest palpitations, you know, listen to their lung sounds, and, I mean, that's, that's a full assessment. It's like when you go into the doctor for your yearly exam, that's all it is, it's not sending you off for a bunch of tests.
Well, now, you know, I've been looking at some of the bills that have been coming out of the jail. There's a whole lot more than that, what you described going on over there with health in the jail. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars. There's what, six thousand dollars a month in, in medicine alone, coming out. There's more than, than a cursory assessment going on over there.
No, sir, that's all it is.
Then why we have all these big bills?
Because sick people are in jails.
That's not an adequate explanation for what we're required to provide. And I take, I take exception, we're, we're, we're doing a whole lot more than what we need to be doing over there, we're, we're very aggressive. The other thing, the other question that I have on this is dental. We've got dental inserted in here, there's nothing in the statute that says dental. So why are we providing dental services?
Because dental services can be deemed emergency, and it is a part of more than just the overall health. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, read, read a magazine on health, and it talks about how, you know, how important dental is to overall health of people. It is, it's a health issue, and it is a behavioral issue as well. If you get somebody who is, who is in incarceration
Excuse me.
And they are having chronic pain that they can't deal with, and they're already people who are subject to making poor decisions, and you put them in a confined space of the jail, then it can become more of a medical issue and more of a, a safety issue, and those have to be addressed.
Isn't that pain more of an emergency item than it is dental care?
Well, I ain't never been, I ain't never been in jail, but if I was in there and I had a toothache, I'm gonna do anything I can to get
That's an emergency item, that you give them something for pain. You don't provide dental services.
The only dental care that we're doing is referring them out if they have pain or abscess.
That's right.
And no elective, no elective care.
And extract only.
That's it. We don't like some pain.
The statutes, the laws that go against, that actually go against having less for dental than providing more, but we do need to provide more services than we need to, to, to care for the inmates that were charged with care, and to, to make sure that we do everything that we can to make our, our jail as safe as possible for the inmates and the people that work there.
The amounts of money that are going through the jail for medical care go far beyond what you guys are talking about. It's a million dollars in the last twelve months for sixty-something prisoners. Three hundred and forty thousand dollars for one prisoner alone. There's drugs in there, a hundred dollars a pill ordered for thirty days at a time. What you're saying, the bills, the invoices that I've been through don't fit what you're saying. Let's put it that way.
Chairman.
Yes.
All right, I, I read the, the, the whole thing, and it looks like to me that what you're trying to do is make sure that when you got an inmate come in, that he's as healthy as, so you'll know he's healthy, and we don't have an issue down the road, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That certainly doesn't, is not borne out in the history of the jail.
Mr. Chairman.
What that need answer either.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm assuming, what I'm reading here, that this I'm assuming, what I'm reading here, that this plan is developed in conjunction with medical personnel.
The plan?
Yes.
The plan is one of four documents that we have. We have MOU, which dictates what we're gonna provide and what the jail expects from us. We have the medical plan, which you have in front of you, which really is the sheriff's way of showing me that they are providing those base health needs of the inmates. Then the health department has standing orders. The standing orders are signed by the doctors, determining what path of work we do on everybody, and then they have their inmate medical procedures. Those are the four documents. So I think the medical plan, or the, I think, I mean, the medical plan meets the bare requirements that are, that need to be there.
What I'm, what I'm actually saying is there's experts involved in the preparation of these medical plans.
Well, the health department is.
Yes, what I'm saying, there's experts involved.
Yes, sir.
It's not non-medical personnel, just experts involved.
Correct.
That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any questions?
I called a question.
All right. All those in favor of approving the medical plan, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And I'll make the assumption that we'll do this every year? This plan is for one year?
Yes, the medical plan, from now on, will be brought forward.
All right. Thank you, Charles. All right, we're down to item number six, the purchase order policy update. Adita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in June of 2018, we were under a pretty tight deadline to have the board revise the accounting purchasing policy so we could incorporate the new federal purchasing guidelines before the July 1st deadline. We told you at that time that we wanted to go back and take a deeper dive and do a more thorough review, and see if there were other revisions that were needed, and that we would also get the finance committee involved in that review process. We've completed that process. Holly and I have looked through the policy pretty thoroughly over the last few months. We've run the recommended changes by the finance committee, and those recommended changes are listed on page 236 of your agenda book, and I'll just go through and briefly talk about the major changes. The first major change is simply adding a statement in the purchasing policy, allowing the deputy finance director to sign the pre-audit certificate on purchase orders and contracts in my absence. And this is not anything new. You all actually authorized her to do that back in, I believe it was December of 2016 when she was hired. So we're just actually putting this within the purchasing policy at this time. The second, excuse me, major change is to modify the threshold for items requiring board approval. So currently, under the current policy, for service contracts that exceed $20,000, and for equipment and material contracts that exceed $40,000, they require board approval. And this seems to cause a lot of confusion for our policy users, and even for Holly and myself when we're trying to enforce the policy. We think it would be much simpler and more concise if we just had $1 threshold for both. And so what we're recommending is that we change that to $30,000 for both service and equipment supply contracts. And the reason we chose $30,000 is because that mirrors the threshold for informal bidding according to state statutes. And then the third change we need to incorporate is the bidding threshold for micro purchases related to federal purchases has changed. That was done by the federal government on June 20th. They changed it from $3,500 to $10,000, and we want our policy to mirror theirs when it comes to that threshold amount. So we're recommending that you change that also. So hopefully, not too much controversy with these changes, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And as I mentioned earlier, the revisions have been reviewed and approved by the finance committee, and we're looking for full board approval tonight.
Motion to approve. Okay, we got a motion to approve the changes and a second.
Well, I've got some questions.
Any discussion?
I have some questions.
Yes.
Well, for one thing, do we have a website for purchasing that we could put things that we want to buy up on the website at all? Do we communicate with the public at all on purchasing?
We put bids on.
But do we have a website that's dedicated to that, that anybody could go to and say, look, this is a Beaufort County purchasing site?
It goes on our main website, the county website.
Okay, but, okay, do we, on, on single bid contracts, do we put those single bid contracts up on the website? This is a single bid, you know, we're looking for somebody else that might give us a price or whatever. Do we do that?
I'm not sure what you mean by single bid.
There's a provision in here, it's talked about at great length, for single bid. We only have one provider.
Which means sole source?
Sole source, single, one, yeah. Uno, yeah, one. Do we put that up on the website that anything, say, $5,000 or more, that we only have one vendor that we know of that we can go to? Do we put that up on the website that we made a single purchase from a single provider in this amount of money for, for certain class of items, so that we could have other people come to us and maybe get those prices lowered? You guys are looking awfully puzzled. I'm not getting anywhere with this.
No, I think you're asking about a sole source purchase, and in the policy, there's guidelines and restrictions on how you can do a sole source purchase. There's, there's documentation you have to do so. In, if it were a sole source, that's the only person, the only company we could go to, we would use that policy. If there wasn't, we would put it out there and request it from anybody.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. You've got a sole source, and you maybe purchased something, or you're getting ready to purchase something again. Do you put, we have a sole source for these items, so we're putting it on the website to see if there's anybody else out there that wants to give us a price on it, to get the price down?
We all, we bid stuff out like that, yes, sir. I mean, we don't just say, we've just got one person we're gonna get it from. And that's, we don't do that. It goes out for bid.
No, but you have, you've done your bids. You're down to where you're filling out the papers for a sole, single-source provider. Do you advertise that on the website? And so that, maybe we're not perfect. Maybe there's somebody else out there that would be willing to provide us with this. Do we have a website that's dedicated to purchasing in Beaufort County? Now, I want to say this, and about half of these people are gonna jump up and down and tell me I'm unprofessional and getting mad about it. Beaufort County is notorious for bad purchasing practice.
I mean, I don't understand.
And that was before you guys got here. That didn't start when you got here.
Well, we don't think it's, we don't think we continued it either.
Okay. I'm just trying to help, I'm just helping, trying to help you be even more successful, but I'm getting the drag back on this, and I'm real uncomfortable when I get drag backs on things that have to do with, why can't we open this up to get some more pricing on this?
Well, if we bid it out, then, and then we're under contract with the winning bidder, it wouldn't be appropriate to, to be putting it on our website so anybody can come in. We'll be under contract with that winning bidder.
And it depends upon the thresholds, Commissioner Richardson.
I, I don't think I'm getting anywhere. I, I think we're on a whole different wavelength with this. What about, how many open accounts do we have? Open accounts being you can go down to Lowe's and pick up something, you can go to Walmart and pick up something, you can do this or do that. Do we, how many open accounts do we have? We've closed all the open accounts.
Lowe's is the only one that I know that we can still do that, because I had to do that during the hurricane.
Okay. Do department heads screen that account monthly before it's paid? Who, who audits that account for payment?
Finance.
How do you know what they bought? How do you know what it was needed for?
I receive a statement in my department, and then they turn in receipts for charges. We match that up with the statement. If we're missing anything, we go on a hunt, and we figure out who it is.
Yeah, but you're just closing the books with that. Do department heads, does the department head have to approve that account? When you go over it, when you're through with it and you've got it organized, does it go to the department head for their approval?
They have to approve the purchase, yes, when they turn, before they turn in the receipt.
No, not the purchase. I'm talking about auditing the account monthly before the check is written for that account. Do they approve the, you give them the group amount for that month, and they give you a sign-off on it? Yeah, we, we authorized all of this stuff?
No, not after, because if I've matched up all the receipts up to the statement, then they're all accounted for, and if they've signed the receipts and authorized the purchase, that ties back to the statement.
You've got the department head's signature on every one of them?
I have two signatures.
But you've got, you've got the department head's signature.
Most of the time. I'm not gonna say there's never been an instance when a department head was out of the office, and we had two other signers within a department.
Right, and this is the reason why it needs to go back to the department head, so when he's not there and somebody else is signing and all this stuff's going on, he needs to know about it.
There's still two signatures required.
That's, you know, that's, that's the bookkeeping, that's the, that's the, you know, we're talking about management here. We're not talking about how to keep books.
No, we're talking about audit and fraud. That's why we have two signatures, to make sure that no one person can do that.
But your signature, but your signature system that you have is not a comprehensive system with the department head knowing what's going on. You're telling me as long as I got two signatures, I can go out on the street and get somebody to sign something? You know, you don't, the system doesn't close.
It does close.
Will you, will you refer to the, the page that you got concerned of?
No, I made a list of my comments from the whole.
But you're not referring to any page in the policy?
Yeah, I'm referring to items that are in this policy that they've.
Wait, I've not heard you, I've not heard you use any number or any page.
You know, we're all on a different level. I can see that.
I mean, I would, I would love to follow you.
I'm on a management level, and all of you guys are on a bookkeeping level, matching up pieces of paper.
All right. Any other comments? We got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the policy change?
Wait, Mr. Chairman, you're cutting me off. You're cutting me off.
Well, you, you refer to a specific number in the policy.
No.
I can follow you.
You're forcing something.
You're rambling. You're rambling.
That's your opinion.
Yes, you are rambling.
And that doesn't have five cents. So I have one more thing to say.
I wish you referred to the page.
I have one more thing to say, because we're obviously, part of us are bookkeeping, 101, and part of us are into management. That's a whole world apart. Let me ask this question. Why doesn't the county set up a website that is dedicated to purchasing?
We have a website, and we post our purchasing on that website, and then we also post it on the state and North Carolina's website and their interactive purchasing system, and we post it on the minority and women-owned businesses' purchasing site as well.
Well, you finally answered a question.
Jesus Christ.
All right, all right. All those in favor of the changes in the policy, raise your right hand.
I have some questions, but I'm gonna go and vote.
All those opposed to the changes in the policy? Let the minutes reflect. All right. We're down to item number seven, the appointment to Region Q, the Workforce Development Board. That's you, Katie.
She had anticipated having a person that might be interested in this position. We've not been able to contact her as of yet, so there is a position available in our Region Q Workforce Development Board. You see on there the summary of information, the guidelines, the position that is required. If you guys know any business owners or anybody specifically that go with the workforce or healthcare or workforce development that happen, please encourage them to apply.
And for the public, that is the owner or chief executive officer, chief operating officer, or other individual with optimum policymaking and hiring authority.
That eliminates me.
Eliminates Commissioner Booth. All right. We've already had a break, so we're down to item number eight, the acceptance of grant funding and approve the technical services contract. Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just let you, I am pinch-hitting for Christina on this. She's on vacation this week, so these next two items are, I am pinch-hitting for her on those. This first one, as you have been made aware of, Golden Leaf Foundation awarded the county a grant in the amount of $296,300 to continue the installation of backup generators for the north side water system. McDavid and Associates, our county engineer who handles our water system, made that application on behalf of the county, and it was awarded. The two additional sites that they're gonna complete work at with backup generators will be the Yatesville Booster Pump Station number 41, and the Beach Ridge Booster Pump Station number 52. With installation of those, we'll be able to provide an additional 3,000 customers with water during extended power outages. You have the award letter issued by Golden Leaf Foundation and the acknowledgement and acceptance that we have, that the board needs to execute to receive those funds. You also have a, the associated budget amendment that brings those funds into the budget, and then you have a technical services agreement with McDavid and Associates to complete that work and, and close out this project. We recommend your approval.
Okay. Entertained a motion. Is there a second? Second. All right. Any discussion?
I just want one question. What role is McDavid and Associates controlling?
They are over, they are the engineers that are designing the work and overseeing that and ensuring that it's put in, in compliance with the.
And if the contract doesn't meet the, do they have so many days after to complete the work in?
Pro, I mean, the, the bid specs and all that haven't been drawn up yet, but typically they do, yes.
And would McDavid and Associates be responsible for making sure the subcontractor meets that work deadline?
They would enforce the rules under the, the specs and the, and the guidance.
All right. Any other question? All those in favor of approving the grant from Golden Leaf, raise your right hand. I think everybody agrees with that. Okay. Thank you. All right, we're down to item number nine, the awarding of the engineering service contracts for solid waste.
This is an engineering services agreement with CDM Smith to design the closure of the convenience site on Old Pamlico Beach Road per NC Department of Quality, Environmental Quality Standards, and to design and the improvements at the convenience site located on 99. I don't think we have any questions yet.
Well, I've got two problems with this. Number one, the price for doing this work is double what it should be. They want $40,000 to do something that's really about $20,000 worth of work. And another question is, who pays for the groundwater assessment at, at the old site that we're abandoning?
My assumption would be that, that we would pay for any of the testing that occurs. If it makes sense.
Okay, the, the other thing, I'm still sticking to what I said, $39,500, this is really a $20,000 contract. The other problem that I have with this, this is nowhere in here does it specify what we're going to put at the Ransonville site. There's a lot of talk in here about the close-down site, which is a nothing burger, and nothing in here says you're to design a, a drive-through, roll-off site. It's not talked about in here at all.
That is what they're designing.
But it's not in the contract. I mean, the contract is vacant when it talks about that.
That is the intent, that when, when, and when Christina had the conversation with us, what we were looking for was to design that additional site, to be able to handle that traffic, and to make it a modern convenience.
I'm not gonna say the smartest thing that I'm thinking, but don't you think we shouldn't go back and put something like that in the contract?
We can certainly do that. I mean, if there, if there's language in there that, that, that you don't believe is appropriate, we'd be glad to go back and have that conversation.
Well, it's not as inappropriate, it's just left out. It needs to be added what our concept is of what they're designing at, at the new roll-off site. Otherwise, you know, we've had staff go around and make a lot of decisions I might disagree with. You don't want to be in that position on this thing.
Oh, yeah.
Is that acceptable to the rest of the board, that we enter into the contract?
I'm reading, I'm reading the language. I read the language here. It says CDM Smith would develop a layout and stockpile plan at the Ransonville site for the contractor to evaluate.
What is that?
Well, it implies to me that they're, they're looking at, I think it's roughly a four-acre plot, and we're only using a half acre, that it's the redesign of that piece of property.
To do what, launch missiles?
No, 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 no.
Well, it doesn't say what they're redesigning for. What is it gonna do when they finish with it? It's got, the contract has to state what the functionality is. with it? It's got, the contract has to state what the functionality is, that you're hiring the person to do.
Well, it's already a, it's already a land.
Once again, guys, we're operating on different levels.
Well, truly. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions of Brian?
Well, my question hasn't been answered. Is the contract going to state what we're paying these people to design? They're already charging us twice what they should be charging
We're happy to sit down with Commissioner Richardson and add any language he would like in that.
I just wanted to find what we're paying them to do, what the product's going to be when we get done.
And I'm assuming Christina's already done that based on the.
Guys, I got to say, the reason you have written contracts is so you don't have to do the oral things that nobody knows anything about and it's lost in the wind. We're having a written, we tear this up and throw it away, and you can have an oral contract. That's what you're talking about.
Brian, is there going to be a contract written, or is this the?
It's the way they present their scope of work.
Excuse me?
Their scope of work.
This is scope of work, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I still don't have an answer. Are we going to put that in there or not? Is the board supporting the definition of what we're hiring these people to do, or are we going to leave this blank and let them do whatever they think we need? Oh, and by the way, I want to review these plans for this roll-off in the preliminary stage. You can fight me on it all you want to, but this is going to become a big issue. This is an important issue for the people of Beaufort County remodeling that roll-off site, and I'm not going down there and have something that won't work, because we've had too many plans submitted that didn't work to Beaufort County and we've had to rework them. So I'm going to review these plans if the first set that comes across in the preliminary stage.
I think we have, don't our staff, is they're capable of doing that?
We are happy to invite Commissioner Richardson to any time we have a conversation about anything.
You get ready for one big fight over this roll-off, because it's not going to be screwed up. Just how long and how hard do you want to fight? I think the people in Beaufort County are supporting me on this issue. We don't want a roll-off that we can't use. We're already paying twice for the engineering, what we need to be.
I've not been to one yet that we couldn't use. I mean, other than sometimes they're full and they send me to another location, but, okay.
Was this put out to a bid?
Sir?
Was this put out to a bid?
It's Engineering Services, they, this is the, this is the engineering firm that we've used in the past for our solid waste work.
Yeah. What is their deadline for vacating that?
End of the year, end of the year.
End of the year, so. We need to be moving on. I've already had some phone calls, so we don't need to do anything that stalls it until June of next year.
Well, would you call me for the reviews? If I'm available, I want to sit in on them.
I will make sure that Christina is aware that you'd like to sit.
Yes. Commissioner Booth and I will be glad to sit down if he's not available. All right.
If we back.
We got a motion? We got a motion?
What happens if we have our engineer and this engineer over here arguing over?
I win. That's how it works.
Call the question, call the question.
All right. I thought we had a motion. All right. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. I think that's the first one I've made tonight, Kate. Okay, all those in favor of moving forward with Smith on the closure of Pamlico Beach and the redesign of Ransumville, raise your right hand. And those opposed? How does that work when you're opposed and you sit down to the table and try to engineer it?
You don't have, this is not about butt kissing, Frankie. This is not about butt This is about doing a good job for Beaufort County. You got, you don't understand that, do you?
Surveying.
I'm an engineer, I'll have you to know.
Down to item number 10, the radio system change order and the budget amendment. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have attached in your pamphlet or in your agenda item, a system redesign change order for Motorola that's due to the inability to locate on the State of North Carolina Viper Tower in Ponzer. As you recall, when we initially did the project, the assumption was that we were going to be able to get on the Viper towers. We were able to get on the Choclini Viper Tower without any issue. When they did the loading analysis on the Ponzer Tower, it was determined that the tower was at its maximum loading capacity. The cost to structurally stiffen that tower was in excess of a quarter of a million dollars, so there was a move to move to a tower that's adjacent to that one, so that we would not have to do that, and this is part of the additional costs that are related to our putting our equipment there. So that includes taking a generator that we took out of the, that was sitting over here, seven-and-a-half-kilowatt generator, moving that down there, acquiring the cabinet, the radios, equipment goes in, and putting all that down there, and then tying back into the Viper system. As you recall, there was some funding in this originally to do structural stiffening if we needed to do that in the amount of $100,000. That $100,000 was moved by the board when we ran into the issues with the courthouse and the jail, when we had to do the work down there. However, we have gone back into the budget, the overall budget, and Anita has worked really hard to find other areas where we've been able to cut some funding, so there's no new money needed for this project. It is all within the budget, so we're not asking for any new money. We're simply asking you to approve the budget amendment for us to move money to be able to complete this project.
Okay.
I'm moving.
All right, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Brian, correct me, wasn't the reason that we went to this high counter site because, was we were told that we could be able to hook out a microwave or whatever you call on that tower? What happened?
We, originally, when we had the conversation with the state, they said, "You can get on our towers, but you've got to structurally analyze them, you've got to make sure they're okay. We're happy for you to do that if you can get on there." We did that analysis on the Choclini site, and we were that close, but we were on it. When we did the work on the Ponzer site, it was overloaded, or it was at the threshold where we could not, where they could not add anything else on to it. So the state said, "If you want to get on the tower now, you're still welcome to get on the tower, but you've got to reinforce the tower." The cost to do that was about a quarter of a million dollars to reinforce that tower. So Vic and his folks had a conversation with TowerCom, which has a tower adjacent to that one, and we were able to work out an agreement with them to be able to move over on that tower instead.
So what you're saying is that it's not an additional cost, you're just moving some money?
There, it is not an addition, what we have, there is an additional cost for the whole thing, because we were assuming initially, when the project was put together, that the state was going to allow us to use every one of their towers. We found out that we were not able to do that on one of them, and we had some contingency money put in there because we thought what was going to happen was we were going to need to stiffen the tower, but it was only going to be about $100,000. We thought that would be enough to cover it. We'll come to find out, it's a whole lot more expensive to strengthen a tower, and it turned out to be about a quarter of a million dollars. So instead of coming to you for a quarter of a million dollars, we said, "We're going to take what we had," which would have been, we would have been able to do this without any issue if we wouldn't have had the courthouse and the jail problem that we had to fix, and move some money to do that.
I got you. Thank you.
Answer your question. All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right, we're down to the item that was added, closed session to discuss personnel. Do you have that state statute?
Motion is needed to go in closed session to determine qualification, confidence of performance, and appointment of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or suspected public officer or employee or to hear or investigate, charge or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, each and one personal qualification may not be the same.
Okay, need a motion, motion to go into closed session.
I'm moved.
All right. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we will excuse you. Okay, we're back in, back in session and no action to be taken. Here, motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand.